I'd like to take this time to talk about something we need to work on. And after each of you have a public comment, I'll give you a public comment. I would do prayer and I just don't think it's clear to the people. There you go, it's a terrible town, brother. You've got five on East Coast and West Coast, and chaos getting around, always the worst. Make it more than thousands of people. If God, if you're not giving it to the public, then it's easy to lose. I would thank the great Father, become the President, thank you in all forms. Thank you for all the blessed people you have here today. Realize that you need to know how, Father, as you blessed him, you blessed him. Lord, blessed him, pray for his faith. I pray there was someone of people, here, competing in all, I pray for his country, his faith. I pray for peace, I pray for his soul, Father. Yes, I will remember, to be with people here, it's a town that I tell you, Father, every time. I pray for the less fortunate, I pray for the more vulnerable, people, people, Father. Every one of them. I pray for Father, peace, one day, God will look, take the world, God will have the ability to save. For the weak, for the poor, for beautiful, for people who are lost, ready to receive. And I pray that he's getting out here, in the mind, keep going, always for the hungry, and give them what they want.
Amen. Place of life. I pray the greatness of the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the dismal, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Here.
Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCurry.
Present.
Mr. Keith Mill.
Here.
Mr. Richard Alago.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy Oakley.
Here.
First Lady Lou Skene.
Well, the whole, I mean, most of the food begins in one of these. A corporate entity, which is very good, we pray that it's a low.
A low.
Seven.
Yes, yes. Question from the audience, in our favor, in our home, we appreciate it. Okay, first of all, I think, adapt to me from 2020 to 2024, resident.
I read all this, first, I'm seeing the steps that I'm moving to.
Who's on this list of second, in this town, that's been described, question from the audience, in our favor, in our home, we appreciate it. Adapt to me, for example, for 2024, resident, from the table.
I'm excited about this.
This one, Mr. Mills, second, and adapt to point, they described, question from the audience, in our favor, in our home, we appreciate it. In who did it? Take action of the whole audience or a delegate, or a portion of you create, right? We have a public comment, a public summit from the audience, but with the prayer that we do.
I make a motion, Joe, I'm going to go.
The vote.
I make a substitute motion, they know, so that the bill will make sure everything is taken care of in the right manner.
I'll second that motion.
It's a question of down, come down, it's a circle. It's a question, and we're directly to the list of four, four that suit the community.
Are you saying you don't really make a decision until we hear?
I'm saying until, okay. Change your terms, yes, the right thing to do.
That would be the first meeting, Mr.?
I'm sorry, what, what? What? We're taking, it's the right thing to do.
Hey, Congress, Lord, I'll get the light, you not to talk about what would ever pound me, with everything with everybody.
From legal standpoint.
Legal standpoint.
I was okay.
Before we make the decision, let the control, you got to be, and you pass that through for the first meeting this time. I say the football, medicine?
Yes, sir.
It's a question, question of the audience, in our favor, in our home, we appreciate it. The first meeting is done, we have a decision. Okay, this, this goes to the future, damsel, complete, and related to the future, minute, so. This is your call, thank you. Please take the main view.
Jeffrey Gardner, East Lishana, on assessment. My understanding is, there are some questions to me, so I can give a brief synopsis of what's going on with the, are y'all wanting to know about the public service, uh, non-domicile properties?
Yeah, the public is acquiring about millers, and many of the place, they're not, that's mythic, property tax is what it is. We have companies, gardens, railroads, domiciles, we talk about millers. If you raise down this one mill.
Let me explain that. So, East Lishana Parish is the lowest mill parish in the state. The state constitution gives them the opportunity to domicile anywhere they want in the parish, or in the state, excuse me. So they have multiple choices, uh, there's no restrictions as far as, uh, the companies have. What they have to do is, they have to declare an agent. So we have, as far as I know, there's only one agent in East Lishana Parish. So, the different entities go to that agent, the agent represents the company to the tax commission, and then they go from there. I do not assess one penny of that. All that information goes to the tax commission, the tax commission sends me the figures for me to apply to the tax code. Anything that's public service, whether it's any of these entities, Bell South, Entergy, all those figures are sent to me, and I cannot question them at all.
The question is, yeah, if we raise down this, this comes from here, in right now, what to say?
Well, let me give you the, let me give you the real answer to that question. We're, we're number one by five minutes. If we lose these ships, railroads, barges, and other entities, that right now, just those three entities, ships, railroad, and barges, and ships and barges are different, we will lose sixty percent of our taxpayers.
Thirty pence.
So, so here's the funny, here's the thing that the state constitution allows for, that is really the bad part. If a entity, such as the police jury, the school board, the sheriff, if they have a budget shortfall, state constitution allows those entities to roll their mileage up to where they meet last year's budgetary needs. So, excuse me, right now, we're at forty-seven and a half million. If two hundred and thirty-one million dollars of assessed value leaves, it falls on everybody in this room that owns property. So your taxes will go up approximately, and there's some variables, eighty percent. The people that fall under Homestead will not pay, because they fall under Homestead exemption. So everybody else that's above Homestead, you'll saddle that burden also. So it's more than just, well, we'll lose that money. We won't lose that money. We gonna pay that money in return. So it's either gonna be on these entities, or it's gonna be on every taxpayer in the parish. That's the real scenario.
Fifty-two percent of the land.
And that's just, yes, and, and just three years ago, we were less than fifty percent. So now we're at sixty-two percent. It brings in approximately fourteen million dollar, fourteen million dollars, actual dollars to our area.
That's all, all of fourteen?
Approximately fourteen, for everybody, so.
Give it to who, or anyone?
Every, if you have a village, it's applied to, if you have a parish village, it's applied to you.
For you, fifteen eight, he's fourteen seven.
Fourteen, about fifteen million.
I'd rather be a little.
That time, that time, make anyone afraid.
Well, it's just, so this started about, I'm gonna say, I think it was nineteen years ago, Union Parish put on, the school board put on five millers, and they left like the Hebrews leave, left these, and they came to East Lishana, and they've been here ever since, and they grew. Point Compete had a couple, and Point Compete's, uh, school board raised their taxes, and they left Point Compete. So, it is, it's, this year, we got an additional seven million dollars, uh, every year, we pick up a little bit more, so.
And they don't use any of our infrastructure?
And they don't complain?
They don't have planes, they don't crawl out, they don't have a sign, or that we're on.
They're not trying to get anybody out there?
You don't have to pick up this garbage.
Well. I'll just say this, if, if we raise our mileage, and we become number two, get, get your checkbook ready. But I'm just, I'm just telling you the truth.
They gonna leave?
They gonna leave. And right now, assessed value, just those three entities, are three hundred and thirty-one million dollars assessed value.
And, and are they capitalizing by percentage, yeah, is that my question?
They're, so your residents is at ten percent, commercials at fifteen percent, industrials at twenty-five. So that, that two hundred and thirty-one is just twenty-five percent of the real value. But that's kind, incidentally, matter of fact, they're attacking that right there at the state capitalizing speed.
Because I would do the government's character, that's all of you.
But it, I'm just, you know, if they leave. This, if, if, if the entities do not grow, then services won't be provided. I'm just, it's just, it's a double-edged sword, it's nice, but if you lose it, it's painful.
Now, if you don't understand, the city we're about to make, I said, city I was about to make to go to this ball, we don't wanna do.
We don't wanna touch this. If we wanna do something to, to other things, fine, but we don't wanna touch this. This is like finding money in a sack on the side of the road.
You text me, we can tell, we can probably, we can tell. You will quickly.
We're number two right now.
Saint Landry. Saint Landry?
Oh.
The question from the audience. I would thank you so much.
Y'all have a good night, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Catherine Landry, I live here in Clinton, and I'm just asking the question, are you opposed on their decision on the demolition of the old high school? Because I think a lot of people aren't aware of the decision, and I just would like more time to explore different options for the use of the building.
If they were useful, that, they go to who, huh, now, one, one, forty-three office, go back, that the building is rather tough, you know.
So.
I'd like to make a motion, we just table this, we'll fill it out.
Check camera, camera. You don't, you don't need to do anything, that, cause. I'll, 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 y'all done so far as clear surplus. We have, Sheriff's got stuff in there, the Coors got stuff in there, we have stuff in there, I'm sure nine-one-one probably does, corner problems with us, I, I, I'm sure about everybody does, I mean, it's.
So it's just been clear surplus and done with it, yeah.
We've, we've left on building up with people here, yeah, we're true.
Yeah, we're talking about that.
The, the wind, yeah, we come there again, we have no place to store, the stuff that's in there, and we gotta get everybody that's, an agency that's got anything in there, go in there and see what, first off, you can get rid of. And if, if you go through there, I've been to first over there, and I think, I think some homeless people might be living in some town. There's a lot of, food wrappers, and cups, and bottles, all kinds of things in there, so.
We're, we're, we're gonna say that, how much is secured?
So there is, I mean, when it broke out, and there was, as, but no, I said, we, we, I mean, it's close enough.
But it's a historic building, and it means a lot to the community, so I appreciate it.
Do you pursue your evidence that you want to do?
Thank you very, very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. I have to do that, and we, we could work it out, there you go, a long collapse, you wanted to copy that, you have to have it.
They, how did they work, as long as they, you know, went to offer endeavor with them, as far as the pricing, for the police jury, how?
Yeah, what they told me, Mr. Troy, was that, that all they want us to do is do the work. And they don't want us to pay for anything, or anything, I mean, they're gonna supply the materials, unless somebody tell me something different, what lady tells you about that.
Well, I think, according to Sam, please correct me, according to Attorney General, we're not supposed to incur any debt for a corporate endeavor, am I correct?
We gotta give something back, and back, that's all, that's all.
That's right, in kind, by the way, I understand.
Now, there again, I mean, Mr. Quillen helped there, but to me, if you have residents that, because it is in the parish, I mean, they can maybe say that, hey, my tax dollars may not buy us a river, but it does some other things, so, I mean, there again, that's a question for Mr. Quillen, to find out, what do we need to give back? Because you can't, you can't give away.
No.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, y'all are talking about the village, Wilson. And, and if you remember, holiday, a couple of years ago, you did the same thing with the town of Clinton on Page Street. So, all we did was just change the wording, the corporate endeavor, put Wilson in there, but it's just up to y'all, whatever y'all wanna do on that. I mean, you do have to receive something back, and what you're gonna receive back is, residents are gonna have access to the road. I think the town of Clinton may have helped with our employees, it may have helped with supplies and things like that, but, you know, it should be okay if y'all do something like that.
I mean, I'm going to add another audience, and we got fourteen, I don't know, who did y'all talk to?
Close her. Deborah Thomas, Mr. Thomas?
Come here.
Okay, she spoke to me, right?
Yeah, I spoke to you, I know I'm a lot.
Yes, ma'am, and we told, I suggested what you give to Mr. Quillen, and then you can write the C A, and evidently y'all did, so. And so, to the jury's side.
That they were paying.
Uh, I don't know because it's hard to determine a quote to deal to them and it may be act- it may be inaccurate.
No, God, you need to find the criteria.
We might not have. I sent the guys there today to get the material, but you know.
We need to see what material that we would need.
Oh, you did a quote job. Oh, just get a quote on the material.
No, I sent them to assess.
Okay, okay.
The damage.
O- okay.
Give me a list of what all we would need to complete that job so I can start tallying them.
Okay.
Because I don't wanna, I don't wanna unbid and I don't want. Because I know for sure they, they, they leave a leaf code in there because the drain is not lined up with the codes that they have in. And if we just fix it the way it is, it's gonna continue to do the same thing.
So let's back up because I heard someone was gonna save the town with some funds and so where we had to pay that school to clear it up. So.
See, well, we would do, we would, we would, we would assess the damage. We'll give a quote on all the material that we would need to complete the job. If it was the court, they were okay with it and they would pay the jury. We would do the labor in the meantime.
I don't know if we could, for the product, I don't know if it's lawful to do that for us to pay more than them to pay us. I don't think it is.
How would I do that?
I, 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 yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Pashon. In the past, any kind of work we've done in a town or village, not only materials, but it's manpower, the labor coming back from town and hours. Equipment based on the theme of rentals, they set, they will set this. So we can figure out how much time and equipment it is. They have to fund it because in the town Clinton is not a shared asset. It's all that we're doing work. That's the part of our endeavor. And as far as doing it upfront, as long as we invoice them and they turn around payers, that's fine. They wanna know from when I'm here and not get it back.
I would not give my money upfront.
But you can't stand.
Well, how about if you go and let the bill just go ahead and assess and come up with a price and then go from there? Maybe okay.
That would be rubbish.
That's motion.
I, I got a question for Mr. Corla. Wow, from a, from a legal obligation here, if we go out and say fifty thousand dollars to fix it and we get into it, all of a sudden it becomes seventy five thousand dollars. We've said we can fix it for fifty. So, I mean, we're not in the business of bidding jobs. That's not what the government does.
So what, what, what would be the question on that?
How, how, how does, how does Frosty go out and bid a job? I mean, I, I can understand he can get the materials and all, but figuring out the labor and all this other stuff, I mean, what happens? You run in there and there's more problems. I mean, once you start this project, I, I mean, you run into problems on. Even when you bid it from a private contractor, sometimes you run into problems. That's, that's my only concern. If you give them a hard price of fifty, this comes out to be seventy five, the police jury eats twenty five. I would say no too, but there again, you've told the villagers, Wilson, what you build for.
Well, it ought to be an estimate. Yes.
Yeah, and it's not gonna be a solid bid. It's like, hey, we think we can do it for this, like you just did in, in Clinton. I mean, you did the same thing. You did the work, then you built the town and they paid you after it was done because you really don't know until you make, until you complete the project exactly how much it's gonna cost. It may cost twenty five, you may run into problems, it may cost seventy five. You know, that's something that the town and, and the parish are good. The, the cooperative endeavor is kinda like an open-ended agreement. Hey, we're gonna come fix it, you're gonna reimburse us, you're gonna help us, you're gonna give us some supplies, manpower and things like that. So it's not, cooperative endeavor is not a solid contract between the village and the parish.
I just want everybody to understand that. What Frosty says is that they're still responsible.
We're not bidding on the project. We're not going to run a family. We're trying to go to the business and we're not going to go. We're not bidding the job.
Good afternoon. Pamela Armstead, Alba woman for the town of Rosa. I just have one question to Mr. Frosty.
Yes, ma'am.
Within that, um, within that bid, can you give us an estimated time in also?
It would be hard to say. I mean, we can give you a best guess because we can't actually get down under there and see exactly how much damage is done under there. We can only see halfway.
Cause it's a little bit collapsed.
No, it's not collapsed, collapsed, no.
But, oh, it's undermined and it lost a lot of material from up under the road entirely. It's not gonna matter time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. Our next meeting is the first, uh, I'm sorry, the second Tuesday next month in December.
Do we have to go before your council?
Well, actually, all the council are, are here now, so the mayor is not here. So we would have to, to have another meeting and then we would. Make the return, speak with somebody else. Hopefully, we'll, we'll meet before December tenth, hopefully. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Lizer. I'm the department clerk. Uh, I bet most of you through, uh, discussions and some of our previous meetings, um, but what we have for you tonight is just the first draft of the twenty twenty four amended budget as well as twenty twenty five. I would say, um, one kind of just general comment on twenty twenty five. Right now, we're essentially following where we're expecting to end twenty twenty four, going into next year. And we're still having the conversations on some of the discretionary type items. Where do we need to add? Where do we need to take away for twenty twenty five? I believe the timeline at this point is just an introduction tonight. Uh, we have a workshop, I believe, scheduled for this Thursday night at five thirty. Where we can go into, uh, more details and then the current timeline is a public hearing and adoption. Help me with that, please, Jemisha, December the sixteenth. Um, so, uh, what this will allow us to do is after Thursday night, essentially have, uh, kind of a final document. It doesn't, it's not final in that it's approved, but a final draft, uh, that can be advertised, uh, with the public hearing. What's that? Yes, yes. And, and that's a few of the updates, uh, for tonight since the finance committee meeting last week. So, um, what I have for you, again, it's in draft form, it's high level. I'm gonna focus on some of those bold columns that, that look at totals. We're not gonna go into individual line items, uh, tonight. But a couple of things that we're seeing, uh, we'll start with the general fund on the revenue side. Um, increasing budgeted revenues for twenty twenty four for Water Works grant, uh, that you received fifty five thousand, you got corresponding expense to go with it, so no impact to fund balance there. Uh, severance tax, uh, prior year was two hundred and thirty five thousand. For some reason, the budget this year was only a hundred and eighty thousand. That's projected to be more like two hundred and twenty thousand, so increasing that up to anticipated amounts, uh, by fifty thousand. Everything else is just some minor ins and outs on various line items, nothing that really, uh, affects the bottom line that much. So you can see, you know, total revenues proposing an increase from the original budget, a little under a hundred thousand, mostly fifty thousand for the Water Works grant, fifty thousand, uh, for the severance tax to match actual, what you've already received. From an expense standpoint, you'll see a lot of individual line items, but again, a lot of these are just matching grant expenses to the revenue. So they're, you know, cost reimbursement revenues where you, you spent the money and then we will get reimbursed or vice versa. You already received the money and you're gonna spend it over the remainder of the year. So I'm gonna focus on really operational type changes. Uh, one of the things we saw in the elections category, twenty twenty three actual was twenty two thousand. Uh, budget for twenty twenty four was only ten thousand, obviously in a heavy election year. Uh, so you spent more than that, so increasing that by twenty five thousand to total, uh, thirty five thousand for the year. Next area, um, in finance and admin, you can see a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase in the finance, financial and administrative category. There on page four. Primarily insurance, ninety thousand of that hundred and twenty five, twenty twenty three budget, twenty twenty three actual was a hundred and seventy six thousand. For some reason, that original budget was eighty five thousand dollars, even though the prior year was one seventy six, so increasing that back up to actual, um, two hundred and seventy five thousand. And then about another thirty thousand or so in total, uh, between personnel and related benefits. You can see a two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollar increase in other general administrative of that two twenty eight. Uh, the majority of that is, um, governmental buildings. Uh, so some of the, uh, work done on some of the various governmental buildings, uh, whether it's sprinkler lights, et cetera, some of that is being funded by ARPA funds, uh, per the last meeting. Uh, but those, a lot of those revenues were already received in prior years. Um, and then you've got fifty thousand for the corresponding Water Works grant expense that I mentioned earlier. And then just picking up, um, the transfers to the escrow fund for advent fees. Page five, nothing substantial here. Um, a net five thousand dollar decrease in public works expenses. Again, that's just the public works function of the general fund, which is primarily your building code department, which is technically, uh, general fund function. But net five thousand dollar decrease from the original budget projection. And then in public safety, uh, fire protection, just decreasing the, um, amount that, that we've, we, we essentially remit the fire insurance rebate, uh, back to the fire protection agencies. That number is now actual, so it's, again, it's an in and an out, no impact on bottom line. Page six. Judicial net ten thousand dollar de- decrease from the original budget. Health and welfare, net twenty nine thousand dollar decrease from the original budget. Again, that's one of those areas. Um, twenty twenty three total, you spent two hundred thousand. The original budget for this year was two sixty. We're not projecting to spend that much, so, uh, projecting a final at two thirty, kind of halfway between what you spent in twenty twenty three versus the original twenty four budget. Net ten thousand dollars decrease in culture and recreation and then, uh, a hundred thousand dollar increase on capital outlay. Um, related to, uh, that prior year was, uh, some library, uh, the library expenses and you had a grant to that. So what, what that represents is just other capital outlay within the general fund. Some of it, again, being funded by ARPA funds received in prior years. What, so where we're at right now is a net decrease in fund balance of three hundred and fourteen thousand from the original budget. So, original budget had a surplus of sixty eight thousand in the general fund, projecting a twenty twenty four, uh, current deficit of two hundred and forty six thousand, uh, which would leave you just under one point two million in fund balance at the end of the year. As you can see, the twenty twenty five column there, net change in fund balance, if we just carry over all of the expenses that have already happened, uh, along with a conservative estimate for revenues, no increase in sales tax, no increase in property tax, that would leave you at approximately three hundred thousand dollar deficit for next year. So that's what we'll be working on between now, uh, Thursday's, uh, budget workshop and then ultimately the, uh, public hearing on December sixteenth. Trying to get you to a break even budget for twenty twenty five in your general fund. Any questions on the general fund? That's why you had the whole packet tonight.
Yeah, one, one particular thing. I'm looking at the cultural and regulation. And all the parks and stuff, you know, it seems like, you know, uh, it's pleasant enough, Martin, but. Preparation, parks and stuff, uh.
It starts at the bottom of page and it goes to the top of page, um.
Except one time we had voted that to put in at least twelve to fifteen hundred dollars of EWP to one of our parks and it kinda just went away.
Yeah, and it was in the original budget. You can see, you know, if you look at the far left-hand column, twenty twenty three actuals. Um, twenty twenty three actuals across all of them, six thousand dollars. Original budget for this year, twenty thousand. Spent about three thousand through August. Um, so really, the, the amendment, the reduction of ten thousand was just what can you reasonably spend between now and the end of the year? And then going into next year, it, it's really, you know, a decision amongst you all on, on what you wanna allocate to that and, you know, unfortunately, like a lot of people, you have to, you have to weigh what is priorities, but you're right, it was increased up to twenty thousand across all and just the spending wasn't there. So the amendment for twenty four is really just what are we gonna reasonably spend by the end of the year? The way I have it built right now, we're starting twenty twenty five with where we're gonna finish this year. If you all decided that you wanted to allocate more funds there, you certainly could. Just know that given where we're at, you might have to take from somewhere else.
You gotta try to manage that tree in some kind of way, you know, it does.
Yeah, because our parks, we're trying to maintain the parks and our parks are still going down. We haven't done anything to them the last three years since the pandemic. But we, we get together on that, that's for sure. Thank you.
And, and yeah, and that, that's the kind of discussions that whatever we have next week, you know, we can let you know where you're falling out for next year. And if, and if we have extra, wanna take a day from somewhere, uh, move forward on that basis. The remaining funds are, I'm gonna hit in, uh, much quicker fashion. So the, the first one there on page eight is Homeland Security Fund. You've always budgeted for it separately in the audit. That's included with your general fund. Homeland Security is a general fund function. You're responsible to, uh, provide those services, um, as necessary. Um, it's just separate, separate, simply tracked separately for budgetary purposes. Uh, and you can see really no substantial changes there outside of an additional thirty three thousand, um, in expenses. A lot of that just relates to the allocation of who's paying what salaries, generally half were funded by a grant that Homeland Security got half by the general fund. Simply putting all of the expenses in one spot for simplicity sake. Page nine starts the Roden Bridge Fund. Really two major changes in Roden Bridge Fund from a budgetary standpoint. Um, one of the budgeted line items was previous year's funds for two million dollars and while I appreciate you had that fund balance and wanted to allocate that fund balance to pay for various expenses, that's not a current year revenue from, from a, from an accounting standpoint. So to leave that in there as current year revenue would basically be an automatic budget finding because then your revenues, your actual revenues would fall short. That's just a use of prior year fund balance. So removing that two million dollars of revenue for prior year funds and adding seven hundred thousand to account uh, for some public works reimbursements, uh, there, that line item, DR forty two seventy seven reimbursements. Again, you have expenses that went with that. You would reimburse the funds, so this is, uh, making that, uh, budget represent actual proceeds. And then you can see a lot of the expenses, some of those, um, in, in the proposed amendment, for example, um, bridge repairs. I think that was some ARPA funds that have been allocated, monies were received in prior years, so just picking up that expense uh, to capture anything that would happen between now and the end of the year. And then, uh, some additional, um, salaries and benefits generally, which result from, um, disasters where you're occurring over time and that kind of stuff. But that would have gone on that reimbursement request. So, you know, in total, you can see the, uh, original budget for the Roden Bridge Fund was break even, but that was because they planned to spend two million of prior year funds and counted that as a revenue. We're basically, um, decreasing that in that of one point eight just to show that you're using prior year fund balance to pay those expenses, not current year revenues. Page eleven is the Solid Waste Fund. Really only big item here, um, sales tax are tracking just slightly behind the original budget amount, so, um, reducing sales tax receipts by thirty thousand, uh, just in the event that, that you don't hit that original budget amount. And then the EWP reimbursement, you can see for one point four or five billion, again, another grant revenue. You've got a corresponding grant expense that down there, right under severe storm grant expense, EWP. Just, uh, factoring in the grant revenues and expenditures related to that grant from a budgetary standpoint. And then, um, an additional two hundred thousand in waste collection costs as well. Solid Waste finishes on page twelve. Page thirteen is the Health Unit Fund. Really just, um, increasing revenues by five thousand for additional interest earnings, increasing, uh, operating expenses by twenty four thousand. Uh, just simply annualizing out where you were at, um, through August and where we expect you to finish, about twenty thousand in additional operating expenses. Um, so, you know, net, oh, only decreasing that fund balance by about twenty thousand compared to the original budget. And, um, projecting to finish the year there with a six hundred and seventy three thousand dollar surplus. One thing worth noting here, just again, we'll go into more details in this on the budget workshop. Uh, but a transfer from the Health Unit to the Corner Fund is, is not allowable use of those funds. Um, so while that fund has sufficient fund balance, um, and, and the Corner Fund does need some additional funding to cover all the expenses, uh, the Health Unit will, will not be an appropriate place to draw those funds from. We're also working on a, essentially a three-year look back on that issue, um, with your auditors to correct that for. Yes. And, and the way the tax proposition was written, it funds the Health Unit, is essentially, you, you, there, there's a property tax that funds that and you're allowed to leave one year of operating expenses in the reserve. The remaining amount, ninety percent to Roden Bridge, ten percent to the general fund. So to the extent that the general fund wants to take their ten percent and, and allocate it to the corner, they could, but I think the transfers have been in excess of that ten percent amount.
I don't think you do that. Proposition's pretty clear. You can take twenty twenty four budget, twenty twenty five budget, that's it. And if you get any income above ten percent, it's gotta be the general fund. And say, that's, that's the way the proposition's written. Y'all have the term general opinion, that state stack. Mr. Quillo, uh, his opinion was, you couldn't do it either. Cause I got, I got all the emails.
Yeah, I think in that case, you have to follow the tax proposition. Uh, last page, page fifteen is the Corner Fund. Really no changes here from, from prior year amounts. You know, no, no significant budget amendments. It looks like they may spend about eight thousand less than they originally budgeted. Um, I do have the amounts for next year's budget plugged in and again, you can see for the Corner Fund to break even next year, it needed about two hundred and thirty thousand from the Health Unit, thirty thousand from the general fund. Um, so that's, you can see it's kind of gray because this isn't black and white, but on, in color and on my screen, that's yellow for, to address in, in the budget workshop. There's a couple just minor other funds that technically go into the general fund that, uh, we're still accumulating historically data, but these are all of the major funds. Again, the general fund, Roden Bridge, Solid Waste and Health Unit being the major four. Um, so happy to answer any questions if anyone may have. I will see y'all Thursday night.
How many parks are there in East Louisiana Parish? Did these, um, maintenance and estimated costs, you said fifteen, eighteen of all the year? How many already? I have, I have three in my district. I don't know. Oh, there's nine?
This is a truck for Frosty, uh, hurt down, three or four trucks at least, I believe. And, and guys, I mean, we, we kinda mentioned it in the finance committee meeting the other day, y'all have to invest all the funds, uh, by him, some vehicles. And, and you, you go back, look in your last page, if you have, I, I'll talk about it, why, probably on, uh, Will Andrews and I've got together with all y'all's insurances. And if you look at everything outlined in yellow, with exceptional party. He has suggested that we drop everything, what life goes from those kids. I mean, they're, they're not worth what you're paying them in insurance. You got two thousand four, two thousand six, two thousand nine, two thousand eight, two thousand three, two thousand two, two, fourteen, fifteen, 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 eight, seven.
I mean.
They are, and I'd say this is not. I don't, I don't think you can, you can't vote on it tonight because it's not an item, but y'all, y'all look at that, please. If you have any questions, please call. But it's just, I suggest that we do a way of physical damage on it. Oh, but, but once, 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 once you buy the new vehicles, we ain't there. Right now, I mean, it's, it's good day when all these trucks run.
Day number three, we're taking money for the tour from.
Yeah, this, this, I'm not road rich, that's okay, that's okay.
I make the motion.
Mr. Frosty, what'd I tell you?
What he telling you?
Get a truck, man. Took it for five years.
A two point across among twenty three thousand two hundred and sixty five hours.
So I just wanna let you know there, you all did approve this before when you met nineteen thousand.
Number, have trust of your venture of one course, number seven board commission. And you know the attorney, can you, two seconds, last three of the five, one will have to come out. And then you ask for the point of the first one, come out, so that the other top set is, what's that? Okay, the stuff approved repairs approved your money on the rest of not exceed twenty five thousand by.
Yeah, uh, Jeff works on this and it's, uh. Yeah, Jeff works on this and it's right a little bit under nineteen thousand. We just put twenty-five, not exactly twenty-five, just in case. This is something he got to be in our bank about a year and a half ago, over a year, something like that. And y'all just never get anything. The men's bathroom, this, this got a very bad place for the floor. That needs to be addressed.
Okay, we have the recommendation to review, take action on job status and land skills. This is possible executive session. Mr. Sims, are you here? Do you wish to go in executive session?
In this open, Mr. Sims did receive notice at the last meeting, I think we had a personnel meeting. And he received verbal notice. And just to clarify for the record, you are going to waive or you did receive notice about this meeting, and you're going to waive any other written motions. Right, I just mean, that's correct.
Jane Sims.
Mr. Sims, is there, is there anything that you want to tell us at this time?
I was talking to Charlie, he's not here tonight. I want to say tonight, y'all, I apologize for not recording it.
As you know, committee on the government, they don't have a final say. They think the, the point of the government's recommendation, termination.
Personnel committee did recommend termination based on the information provided. Based on information provided by this year.
That should put that in United States, to hold here to find the state. So what's the trade in here?
I have, of course, Mr. Sims, who had the option of wanting to resign. I would just stand, understand all that, versus being, being terminated.
You give an option. Now, I gave an option, I had my turn here.
So the option was, this is what I'm reading now, so the option was not to accept the resignation decision.
So that's feeling you're, you don't want to exact before, before they vote? And I want to ask, no, yeah, no, no.
Yeah, because I just wanted to be sure, because I, like I said, Mr. Sims, you standing here, I want to make sure that, based on the information coming from the personnel, if I wasn't there, they were there, you were there also, that you did, you know, like you said, and to repeat myself, that you did not want to resign.
Right.
And you understand what I was trying to mean?
That, well, the recommendation could be.
Yes, sir.
It's also being terminated.
And in committee, I just want to ask, because I wasn't there as well. Their, my understanding is their policy and policy wasn't followed, is that, is that what happened? Okay.
My question is, if he does not, is mine, I think. He's terminated, does he lose any time he's period vacation?
Retire.
You don't, you don't, you don't lose your vacation.
Vacation is earned.
He, he sees that.
Oh, he does not lose retirement?
If he's retired eligible, not, he just retired off with whatever he had to pay.
But if he's terminated, still gets, yeah, you, you take.
Yeah, you take, you take, you take best for vacation.
Well, I have to say this, I did repeat myself. Yes, I wasn't at the meeting, but I wanted to be known that when we do one person, everybody's done the same.
That's right.
Well, based on information, what happened, I'd say this worst thing ever happened. But we have to just stand by policy. And it hurts me like I'll get out, but I think we need to follow our policy. So I make the motion.
To term.
To term.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
I'm saying.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain? Yes. Mr. Michael Cheetham? No?
Say no, but not, not, not move to terminal.
Mr. Tom Kledikin?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McRae?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Alago?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Yoculian?
Yes.
Even good employee, I think you figure, yeah.
Yeah, you actually can do it tomorrow, you like go to a paro, you see. It's time, it's time, stop. Mr. Quillo, his time stopped when he was suspended. His time is far, count far, retirement stops then.
Maybe it might be better just to put it in your motion to effective date of determination. It's, it should be applied, it's going to be effective tonight. We wanted to say, hey, determination effective on today.
But you have not paid him for the last three. You need to backdate it because he, he only get credit for, for the retirement. What, if, if you're suspended without pay, you lose all credit for time served.
So he started from that date?
Yeah, yeah. So you need to back, back it up to then, so it's called, I say, he hasn't paid anything into property system, dog and week. So he can't get credit for that.
I think they usually look at that, I mean, four hundred percent sure, but you probably, I don't know, I don't know.
How much you got right now? Yeah. And then, and Frosty have those wheels, so we're good there.
Yes, sir, I have multiple items. Item A is motion to approve monthly invoices. Item B is a recommendation to approve placing each full-time police jury employee on the correct step according to adopted pay scale.
And can I say something, because I want to give you the right. It looks like place all of the employees on the correct pay step. And I was taking where they were, moving them up one, and it wasn't a full step, but most of them tell them twenty-two step. And then give them the three percent cost of living raise to everyone. See, it says, you know, that, looked like it would be around a hundred. All that money is not coming out of the general fund, some of it's coming out of the Health Unit, some coming out of Rhode Bridge, some coming out of Southwest. So it's not like they're taking the first down of all out of the general fund. Some of them come, I think, corner that, that dollar five percent. It's what you turn in, in your book, is what it, yes.
Your budget right there.
I just need to look at it. It looked like it's going to be, like it's going to be right around a hundred. The, the two total was about sixty-two or sixty-three thousand. Yes, yes, but that's not counting your, your benefits.
John Ruchan. Being out of step on the step increases, as soon as you give them three percent, they're going to be out of step again. Because they're not, they're not, they're going to be three percent over their current step. That's the reason they're in between two steps now. Steps are usually done on meritorious, when the whole system was set up when Mr. Glenn Kip was in here. It was all done on meritorious, how many years you had, what, you know, CBLs, all that kind of stuff, what you were based on the operators and everything. So in between steps, but created by the percentage raises.
If you're going to have a pay scale, you have to stick to your pay scale. Have to, or else you can go to pay scale, the track scale.
Every, every group probably get a three percent cross the board.
It's like I say, you, and, and all y'all's steps are built in three percent. From step one to step fifteen, all three percent.
So this is my theory, I'm honest, like you were saying, but everything is still based on what each employee does, what they can do, based on if they operate, they quit.
Y'all gave, y'all gave across the board raise.
Yeah, I, I get that.
There again, my thing, you all was, let's get everybody on pay scale. That way you do away with the raise. And if you want to give somebody more than three percent, like everybody gets, then you give them three percent where you stay on a pay scale. So much easier when you're on pay scale.
Then the campus, then, then you can increase the pace on the value range.
Yeah, that's about it, until you want to try to get that.
Yeah. It's a value range that you kind of increase it up. If you got, if you got supervisor favorite study employee, he will give you that value range before you double that. He takes the motion down.
Most governmental entities don't give three percent. It's, it's tough in a governmental world, okay? You give more than three percent, and it really is. And you can ask them, if, if they're employees, that you might want to give two steps there.
Yeah, only supervisor that's, yeah.
That's, I mean, makes it easier, it's cleaner. You can't go by right about, you know, why, why might we give, you know?
Can you do, 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 increase for anybody, only the company for you?
I mean, I don't mean, if you give three percent every year, you're going to get the quarter, that's wrong.
With the way y'all did it this year, every year you give three percent. And there again, moving forward, if you want to get it, it's supervisor's discretion, because men says, hey, look, this guy's doing a good job, he comes to work every day, he's on time, whatever, like, that's what I asked him, is if you want to give him another, which you, you give three percent.
So let's, let's beg, so we saying we give three percent every week?
I don't. That's what I'm saying, we're shopping, giving raises every year for. Obviously, everybody has, but obviously, everybody has a pain, they're working jobs, not working even one. But the mayor system might say, it doesn't work unless everybody's going to be honest. You know, and there again, you, you open it up to, supervisor likes you more, you're starting to be. It's, it's just, I, I don't matter, just to me, it's easy way to do it, and same, most of them, you don't give three percent.
When we were, when we had our last meeting, it was presented to us that there would be a new pay scale for our office employees. We did vote to recommend approving that minus one line. On their HR line. So when we're talking about each full-time police jury employee on correct according to the document pay scale, are we talking about that pay scale?
No, I didn't approve that.
Okay, we approved all of it except for that one line. So, so if, so we are using that one or we are not using one?
No, we can't do that.
Okay. We didn't approve that one line, I thought we approved the other one.
You did, you just, you stopped. No, no, everybody, everybody getting a raise.
No, no, everybody got the group stamp, that wasn't the problem.
No, sir.
I'll make a question.
I, I got a motion, if someone, my second, if anyone.
Item C, recommendation to approve three percent cost of living increase for all full-time police jury employees. Item D, recommendation to allocate ninety-three thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars eighty-four cents of ARPA for clerk of court operations. And item E is recommendation to allocate forty-two thousand six hundred and three dollars and sixty cents of ARPA for MIS technology. Mr. David, would you like to tell a little bit about?
This, this, this is a IT company. I, 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 everybody in here that works in tech is not good. This is us right here. This is upgrading every night. Our host system, buying new computers, computers that are, are bottom state contracts, and he's doing there. Computers were like twenty thousand dollars, we don't even have to do fireworks. I mean, this, this is a system that's, it's old. Nobody, there were anything upgraded at all.
Is this projected to be done by first of the year?
I will talk to him tomorrow, as soon as I found out, you know, I had to find out whether y'all are going to go for it. And I said, I'm, I'm calling you tomorrow.
You got a motion, I forgot.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Well, I think that it changed it every day.
Final item is item F, recommendation to allocate fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars of ARPA for parish courthouse lighting.
Before we, uh, discussion, before we have this allocated for light.
No, this is a five. There was five, there's five still left in the ground that we like yet. I think there's a couple of, of top two, aren't there?
Yes, sir, basically, what this is, what y'all approved, I'm sorry, Jeff Lee is beneficial. Uh, what we, what y'all approved last time with the lights underneath the trees, there are five lights that are out. There are still eight ground lights, and that is to replace these as well as the, the lights in, in the ceiling. Obviously, they're exterior lights, but they're underneath, not on it. So that has covered that as well. And this gets covered like over there fixed.
But it can't be anymore.
This is all of them. I think, I hope, I hope y'all can tell the difference.
We have a problem with digital.
Everything I might have had, it's been cut. I would like to ask which areas, you know, Christmas is right around.
My baby.
Next, maybe I don't want to hear that we're having to hurry up and get something done.
Just so we're clear, just so we're clear, the police jury is responsible for decorating the屋子, okay?
That's right.
It's as far as it goes, okay? I'm in charge of that, I take great pride in it. But that's as far as it goes, as far as scheduling and planning and stuff like that, times, Jeff doesn't have anything to do with that.
Look, a lot of groups that wanna give, or give a lot of stuff for them, we didn't.
This is, it's been on my books for a long time.
Okay, I'm here, good.
It is.
I like lights, I like Christmas, and you have a lot of work, and I, I think it's.
So what we talked about in the past, adding to it every year, so obviously, everything that we had last year, we kept in dry containers, we kept them in D W, we try to add to it every year. So, takes a point, that's what we did this year.
This looked nice, too.
Do you choose, or do you orchestrate the time that the lights will be plugged in? Yeah?
Nope. Y'all didn't said that.
We said it.
I'm gonna make sure it's ready, okay? I'm gonna make sure it's ready for that Friday, always a first Friday in December. Always a first Friday in December. Last year, we had some issues because of the weather, we can't control that, okay? It's gonna be the first Friday in December.
I mean, that's the time that we discussed this, 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 asking anything about it, I mean, things is almost here.
It's almost here, but we still have to say. Yes, no?
This, 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 Bonnie Hurst, um, I really like the snowflakes. And, and last year, they were a lot missing, or they weren't put in, or whatever, but it, it gives our little town a really, you know, like.
That's gonna be inside the town limits, is what you're talking about, when the town puts up against the lights.
That's our police jury.
No, no, police jury doesn't do that, that's more inside the town.
Tell them. I'll call them there.
But I agree.
I just wanna say, when you mentioned light fixtures, so I represent two manufacturers, one's an industrial lighting line, and one's a commercial lighting and residential line. And I know when we talk, we talk about the light plant, I only know our manufacturers build those, but in the future, if y'all have lighting projects, if someone will contact me, I'll work with you at cost on those projects, and you can, willing to share invoice costs with you on that, so if it's something we can do to help, keep some out of light, for lighting.
All right, I have the insurance on all the vehicles. And they're in the workshop, and y'all please look at that. Please, please, please. And if you got any questions, call me, be sure.
And everything else can be here for sure.
Uh, one thing, first, one, one information on the light and other, uh, the lights in December, what did you say?
December six, 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 six o'clock. Six is six.
It's gonna be big light, the whole thing will come on.
Yeah, just one thing, we're doing, uh, the testing with FEMA tomorrow for the IHOL system, that's the new one coming out, we're doing away with the sirens from River Bend. If you remember, uh, last year, hey, we had the pages all go, all your phones go off with emergency message, how you get them on the TV, hey, and the radio, we can actually do that now. We can actually put it out, and FEMA will review that, and if it's a good message that we need to put out to the general public, if we have like a nuclear incident, hey, we're actually gonna have it set up where Westphal Shiana can actually drop a tone here in our parish. Hey, on something minor, something major, hey, we actually get with River Bend, River Bend and all, we come up with a message, we all approve it, then we get the message sent out. And we're gonna try and have everything done within fifteen minutes of us being notified. And once Lewis and Chrissy, hey, when we sat down there at the drills there at E O C, have we got all your different steps from general alert and all that, that's what all part of this, this is gonna be pre-stage messages. All we do, we're gonna hit message number two. But we'll be competing with FEMA tomorrow at ten o'clock at Westphal Shiana, we did a practice today, it went good for us. A T and T Verizon and T-Mobile, some reason there, it didn't go out. So they're actually working on it right now, trying to see what's going on. But FEMA's coming in the mall to, uh, review us on it, and if it goes like today, hey, we're gonna do good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chamber of Commerce.
State House, the Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber's meeting in the morning at eight o'clock at the Green Door, we were supposed to have a luncheon learned last week, they postponed it till February, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioned workers for turning down any Q and A. Call the Congress.
I have some, um, any jurors interested in going to the police jury conference, please, I mean, I'm sorry.
It's February twenty-fourth.
In that room.
Yeah, dang it. Come and talk with me. Your name?
Ed Parker, I'm the parish representative on the Amen River Basin Commission for Eastwood Shiana Parish. I come to give y'all just a little bit of an update, there seems to be some confusion about how this thing is gonna get the address. Uh, we filed a commision, helped me file the orig- uh, original piece of paperwork for the, for L W I, I filed one prior to that one. And since then, A R B C has filed an additional addendum to the original, uh, paperwork for L W I to secure the funds. The funds of.
What? Do you have public understanding, if you're talking about twenty-six million dollars?
Well, actually, it comes to twenty-seven million, six hundred thousand. And that is for flood control in this parish. Nobody thought about doing this, but I just happened to be at the right place at the right time, and said, hey, I'm gonna take advantage of this. I sit on the commission as parish representative, I am past president of the A R B C commission, I served as president for three years. So, I, I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. David has, you know, been pushing this pretty hard, Yomisha has, but we have a big meeting coming up on the twenty-six at two thirty. And I'm gonna invite some of the police servants to come to that meeting, it is open to the public. We're gonna address a whole bunch of issues affecting Eastwood Shiana Parish. One is dredging, what I'm hearing about, there never was no dredging mentioned in the original paperwork.
The jury have come with.
It has come up, there hasn't been, there is a section they're talking about, which I have asked L W I about that section, and did not get an answer. John Clark, the president of A R B C, asked the same question, as well as some friends from the governor's office, and still did not get an answer, as we get. So hopefully, on the twenty-six at two thirty, we'll know exactly where we stand on this particular project. If something happens and it fails, Arcadia is the engineering firm, if they kill it, they come March, we will refile it, back for the parish. Because I'm not gonna let this lake to the wayside very long.
I'm not gonna believe it.
No, you know, if you think, if you think about it, this is something that's never been done, in a long time. I understand the police jury, and David, Yomisha just acted on, uh, Pretty Creek, I think it is.
Yeah.
So, you know, hey, that's a start. But when these areas flood, and we get a devastating flood, you know, eight inches is bad enough. But when we end up getting thirty-one inches in a day, the creeks and the bodies and his peckers can't handle it. Uh, there was a lot of question about putting pressure on East Bat Brook. I had a meeting with Fred Raper two weeks ago, he said, Ed, let's move on, let's do this, I'm ready for you to do what you gotta do. So that's where, that's where we're at, and I will let the police jury know where we're at, at, as of the twenty-sixth.
We just paid out of Redwood Creek and Creek, we did pay.
Yeah, well, we're gonna do them all, we're gonna do them all. There, originally, when we did this, it was only supposed to be Redwood Creek, Pretty Creek, and part of the Comet, and that was south of Highway ten. Come to find out, uh, we had, Yomisha found out, because I didn't know at the time, we had to break that up. File for the north end, for the south end. But nobody really thinks about what happens to those people up living around Wilson, from Wilson and Norwood in the woods, when those creeks and bayous flood. What happened? They become impassable, and can't get people, can't get out, and the parish, I guess, does what they've been doing, homeland security, go on and retrieve them and move. But that's where we're at, with that. The only other thing I'm gonna talk about at this point, and I know I only got three minutes, but A R B C is updating a master plan. We've been designated by the state legislature to update that master plan, to include the Amen River, and its tributaries, and the Comet, and its tributaries, from the beginning to where it ends. And Comet ends at French Settlement, Amen starts up, up above Felixville, and goes all the way to Lake Maribou. So we've hired a company called Dewberry, and I don't know if y'all would concur with them, but Dewberry is a well-renowned company, and they are the ones doing the master plan work for A R B C. Because we're mandated by the state legislature to file that, so we're doing that as we speak. Uh, hopefully, by December thirty-first, we'll have it ready to go, and at that time, I will bring a copy of the back-updated master plan for the Amen and the Comet, and present that to y'all, so y'all have. I'll be glad to ask any questions.
They keep looking at the cube before.
Yes, sir, Jeff calls, so I have a question.
Sure.
So you, you would be considered dredging the Amen River, is that what, am I hearing you right?
No, no, there was a section of the Comet.
Okay.
That they had mentioned not needing to be dredged.
Okay.
They, David probably noticed which section that was, I, I, I didn't get that information. But, the deal is, when I filed the original paperwork.
There was no dredging.
The dredging was nowhere mentioned in our original paperwork. What we were concerned with A R B C is relief flooding in these rural areas where people can't get the help, we're gonna try to prevent that from happening in this parish.
So, so, so regarding flooding along the Amen River, the Amen River was impacted by Little Beaver Creek, which runs to my property, Beaver Creek, which runs to my property, and the Amen River.
Right.
Now, I'm cleaning, so you know where I'm at, right?
Yeah.
So by cleaning those tributaries, what are we gonna do? We're gonna, we're gonna speed up the flow of the water. We're gonna speed up the money.
But, but, they're also working on those abandoned, uh, gravel pits.
Okay.
In those gravel pits, we have presented us, uh, a workshop with the state legislature through Capital Outlay. We have gotten two that we've identified already. We're gonna build green spaces there, A R B C's gonna do this, we're gonna build those green spaces on those abandoned gravel pits, and make it accessible to the public, for public use. We've already had, uh, an engineer designer, we have the blueprints, we have the engineers on staff that can do it, so, uh.
There's a highway sixteen?
Yes, highway sixteen, uh, Capital Outlay has already granted us twenty-five million dollars to do that. So we're gonna stop working on those green spaces, and make them accessible to the public, and that's where, that's where it needs to be. They need to be accessible to the public.
Because Beaver Creek, I mean, if you took the water from Beaver Creek and Little Beaver, if you took the water out of that tributary, you would greatly change the, part of the flood level of, of the water downstream. If you slowed, you just slowed it down.
But, but those green spaces that we're gonna build on those abandoned lines, because we, we got three identified, two for sure, it's already been approved.
You gonna pump water into those, or you gonna just?
There's nothing, there's nothing, big holes there.
So just floodwater on it, you hack those?
Right.
And then you gonna pump those down when they're not being?
Yes, because then we moved out downstream. Dewberry's already mentioned the dredging of the lower Amit, because the lower Amit is only at about forty percent.
Okay, I'd like to spend some, one-on-one time with you, some point, discussing.
Bonnie Hurst, can you say?
Major.
Um, where is this meeting on the twenty-sixth, and what is the time?
It'll be at the LaSalle Building, sixth floor.
At what time?
Yeah, two thirty.
Two thirty, that's the end.
Yes.
Okay, is, is there any, um, restrictions, I mean, I know, you know, we're supposed to be getting the money. Are there any restrictions that would keep us, that you know of, from getting?
The only, the only thing that, that I see is it would be up to God to turn us down. I don't even have the authority to do that, because once I filed it for the parish, it belongs to the parish.
So at this point, it's gonna be our decision tonight?
Right, and the meeting on the twenty-sixth now is with Arcadia, and Arcadia will, will tell us about the dredging part of it, that I didn't know nothing about, right? Because there was no money set up in this original budget for dredging, and which, we never talked about dredging. What we did is we looked, we looked throughout Eastwood Shiana Parish, and identified those areas of socioeconomic, downturn, poor people, poor areas of the parish that can't help themselves, that we, A R B C, working with L W I and governor's office, we can do something in those areas, to help everybody. Especially, this would even help the police jury, because it would fix, it would fix an all-time problem. How many culverts in this parish haven't been worked? You know what I'm talking about.
So the contract we signed here, it was.
Part?
We took, we, we signed a contract, uh, two weeks ago, or were you voting on the contract?
You never, well, the original, listen, the original people that I recommended to the police jury, and I think Yomisha will admit to this, uh, with Port LeBoutte. Why did I mention Port LeBoutte? Port LeBoutte has did over a hundred miles of cleaning parts of the Amit and its tributaries in Lydson Parish. They're well-known on how to do this, and that's why I recommend the Port LeBoutte to, to parish.
Well, it's not on the plan for everything.
Yeah, because they got the experience and the know-how. And, and L W I doesn't question Port LeBoutte on anything, Chad knows what he's talking about.
Any question?
I just would ask, if we gave you a letter, it's for women, that helped our cause at all?
Sure, sure, if the police jury give me a letter stating you wanted it, uh, this to happen, it would sure help me a lot.
Is that something we can do possibly?
Do it.
Thank you.
Want to get a bar?
Part?
Want to get a bar, is there a website?
Yeah, uh, A R B C used to have a webpage, uh, but L W I has a webpage, uh, A R B C, I think, still has a webpage, but we updated most of that up, but I think it's still there, uh.
But then we'll talk about what you're talking about.
Uh, some of it, yes, but most of the webpage on A R B C is dealing strictly with the diversion canal. Which I have, which I have, which I have handed and acquired, and hopefully, it'll do with some of this area.
You're dating them.
Well, I want to thank this young lady for her help, she was a big help to me, uh, when you first told me to work with Yomisha, uh, and she did an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Because she was a big help in getting the second page of this thing done.
They keep it updated, Mr. Paul?
I'll be glad to, and like I said, I will, uh, let y'all know as soon, if I can get the letter, if we can prove it from Doc, then.
Well, you're very much.
Twenty-seven million, the twenty-seven million is yours, it's not mine, it's yours, Mr. Williams.
Is there any cop sharing involved in this?
No.
Hundred percent?
No, it's one hundred percent, tax-free, one hundred.
Everybody knows.
Yes, sir.
Well.
It has, it has.
Would you please write a letter to the board?
Would you please write a letter before? I don't want to. For L W I?
Well, it needs to come to A R B C.
Okay, well, H, H G A is your administrator. We have a contract with H G A. You already awarded them for your administrative. You awarded.
So we need to ask them environmental, you need to speak with them to write a letter where they are with this.
And we have a debris contractor too on the contract too.
Right, that, that was serious.
Yeah, serious.
Yeah, serious is a debris contractor, Helus is a, an environmental contractor. And I, I, I speak every couple days to Helus.
Take your name, please. George Turner, uh, from East Feliciano, called Ethel. I have one concern is I was curious if I could make a request if the, uh, police jury could, uh, place on the agenda at least once a month, an update of the housing source voucher concern.
Trevor Collins, director of Walden Library. Yes, good evening. I will take a moment of time. I just wanted to let you all know that, and share that the library was fortunate to receive the proceeds from the sale of the old Clinton location. That was donated by the East Feliciano Memorial Library Association specifically for the Clinton branch. Following positive public input at an initial meeting we had, uh, we'd like, we planned to use the funds to create a small play area outside of the library and, uh, improve our parking lot. So we'll host another public input meeting at, at the Clinton location right across the street. Uh, it'll be on December second at five P M. It'll be right before your meeting. So if, if any of you would like to just pop in, uh, we'd love to see you there. We'd, we'd love to have your input or support, or just if you know anyone who might be interested, um, please let them know. It'll be, again, December second at five P M.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just think that the library is doing a great job.
Thank you.
And just encourage you all to take your kids and great kids and great, great kids out to get a library card.
It's a, it's a nice place.
If you have that ability, you need to.
Go, go send it out.
Read the book.
Never want to come in. If not, they can't want, first of all, I wish everyone a hesitant gift. My prayers is safe and good. Let's be well, the real reason for the speaking, because. We gotta try to protect the public. Let's try to come out back.